Call me in order and start with budget.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The invocation by a resurrection root here? Okay, not here. Roll call, please.
McCartl.
Here.
Dozier. Barrington.
Here.
Allen.
Here.
Charks.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Savers.
Here.
Rice.
Here.
You know, a quorum. Approval of consent agenda items. Items apparent consent agenda may be removed by a city council member for discussion beginning of formal agenda items. Anything you wish to remove?
Not to remove, but the sales tax. I wonder if Stephanie or Michelle would like to make a comment because it's pretty impressive.
Um, I can pull up the both of them maybe because we did have that question that came up this morning versus just looking at last year. Can you guys hear me on here? I don't know if it's working. Oh, yeah, it's working. Sorry. Um, so as you saw in the packet, the first and second penny sales tax is up 9.5% from 2020. But if you look at it compared to 2021, um, 2019, we're up 14.4%. And then entertainment tax, whoops, I was looking, excuse me, entertainment tax is up 22% from 2021. And we're up 14.3% from 2019. Um, so you can see, as we've said before, July is really receipts that are happening at the end of May, beginning of June. Um, so what we're hearing from local businesses and at least with tourism type industry that we should probably see entertainment tax take a big jump in the next two months too. Because we're always about six weeks behind on when people actually bought things to where we report it. But it is kind of nice to look at both year comparisons instead of just last year because last year was kind of crazy, so.
It's funny though, it's funny though, because it seems like you would expect the larger increase to be over 2020, but when you compare it to 2019, that's what's really impressive.
Look at July's receipts, yep, right here alone. Um, one of the things that I did share. I'm trying to see if I can see this. Um, we've had a lot of conversations about the remote sellers tax, which is the internet sales tax. And if you remember prior to, um, 2020, they were, well, when they did start reporting it first, they were lumping it in with all the other sales tax. We did make a request that the state start giving us that breakout by city into, uh, by month. And they did start doing that late Oct- um, 2020. So you can see how much that brought in once they started categorizing it separately in 2020 for us. And then this year to date, we're already at 421,000. So your monthly average this year is 60,000. So that's making a huge impact on the city. Um, I know we had that conversation quite a bit last year that that probably helped save some of our revenue during COVID. It was relatively new to start gaining that in our receipts, so.
And that's in your numbers now at 40%.
It's reported as part of the first and second penny, but, uh, Department of Revenue is now breaking out the totals by month for just remote sellers tax for us.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Mrs. Charks.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rice. Further discussion. Is there anybody in the audience wishes to address these items? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Barrington.
Aye.
Allen.
Aye.
Charks.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Savers.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
McCartl.
Aye.
Motion carries. Citizens input, if you need to address mayor and members of city council on item that is not on the agenda, excluding personnel items, please come forward to the podium, state your name and your concern. Presentations are limited to three minutes. Items will be considered, but no actually taken this time.
Hi, we have a little.
We're going to get you a permanent.
No, I have a handout for all of you. Um, Sonia Van Der Wick from Mitchell Township. Um, I just wanted, I had sent you guys an email. I know it was short notice. There was a, um, webinar today about 5G and it actually talked about this court ruling and I want to just discuss that with you. So the U.S. Court of Appeals for the, uh, D.C. District, um, Circuit Court published its decision on August 13th. The court ruled that the FCC failed to consider the non-cancer evidence regarding adverse health effects of wireless technology when it decided its 1996 radio frequency emission guidelines to protect the public's health. So the court's judgment states, "The case be remained to, remanded to the commission to provide a reasoned explanation of its determination that its guidelines adequately protect against harmful effects of exposure to radio frequency radiation." The court's decision exposes the FCC and FDA as captive agencies that have abandoned their duty to protect public health in favor of single-minded crusade to increase telecom and, uh, industry profits. The lead attorney, Scott McCullough, of telecommunications and administrative law attorney, who represented the petitioners in the hearing, said, "This is a historic win. The FCC will have to reopen the proceeding and for the first time meaningfully and responsibly confront the vast amount of scientific and medical evidence showing that current guidelines do not adequately protect the environment." Um, they failed to even look through the 11,000 pages of evidence. Um, the FCC will finally have to recognize the immense suffering by millions of people who have already been harmed by the FCC's and FDA's unprecedented failure to protect public health. Finally, the truth is out. I'm hopeful that the following of this decision, the FCC will do the right thing and halt any further deployment of 5G. Um, there were other petitioners that were in that, um, including Professor David Carpenter, M.D. He's a world-renowned scientist and public health expert who is a co-editor of the Bio Initiative Report. It's the most comprehensive review of the science of radio frequency effects. Um, there are certain physicians that also, um, gave their information on the petition about the sickness that they've seen in their clinics due to wireless radiation, which is definitely going on in our city too. It's going on everywhere. And a mother whose son died of cellphone-related brain injury. And I bring this up is because, um, as you know, Beth and Scott Bauer and myself have brought information towards about 5G. And, um, a lot of people say it's a conspiracy theory, but it's absolutely not. This ruling itself, um, means that the FCC, what they have said is safe for radio frequencies for cellphone and everything is null and void. They have to prove now that it is, is safe and it's not. So my thing is, we are looking at specifically, it's even a bigger deal with children. Um, you can see, uh, radiation poisoning, which is learning difficulties, ADHD, autism, developmental issues, nosebleeds, headaches, eye pains, flu-like symptoms, nausea, fatigue, cardiac pain, head pressure, all this kind of stuff. And so we have kids that are on devices. They have smart labs at schools. Um, even for us, if you hold your phone for two and a half minutes, your red blood cells start to clump. So this is a huge, huge issue and now I, I just bring it to you guys so you're aware because there's someone in town that's selling these OTards over the airway radio devices and those have not been proven safe. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address council?
Mayor and council members, Doug Greenway, Corn Palace Director. Um, exciting week for us next week. We're, we're thrilled that indoor shows can come back to the Corn Palace Festival for 2021. Celebrate 100 years in this building. So I want to remind the community that that kicks off on Wednesday, the 25th and runs through Sunday, the 29th. There's something for everyone, including a James Valley Community Center dance here in the Corn Palace on Tuesday, the 24th. Going to allow some extra space and extra bodies in the Corn Palace. Um, the Gold Star Amusement will start up Wednesday at 5 o'clock. So those vouchers for unlimited rides are available now until Wednesday, the 25th for the community members to buy. Um, our concerts this year will actually have free entertainment in the plaza every day, uh, Wednesday through Sunday, um, before each concert as well. So our concerts this year, Williams and Re along with, um, the Something New Band on Thursday at 7 o'clock. Plenty of tickets available for that, but it is selling well. Friday, we have Whiskey Myers, uh, opened by Weston Frank. We have nearly 1,100 tickets sold for that show now. And Saturday is Black Hawk with our opener, the Powell Brothers. And again, that's selling well. Sunday is kind of a variety day. We have a cowboy church service with country music and some gospel at 10:30. We have polka coming back to the Corn Palace from 1 to 4 that day with Barefoot Becky. And then the South Dakota Country Music Hall of Fame and, uh, the Texas Summer Jammers playing from, uh, 5 to 7 on Sunday. And the festival wind down approximately 5:00 P.M. on Sunday. So we welcome the community out and thank you for support from the council. I left you a poster. If you care, we have lots more in the back. If you have a place to put that, we'd appreciate you taking one and, uh, promoting the festival. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address council?
I've got one. Um, I received a call today asking questions about the weeds on Dry Run Creek by Minnesota Avenue and how often those are cut and how often they're monitored for how tall they are and whether the nuisance laws that apply to citizens also apply to the city park land.
Mr. Powell.
Yep, in the, in the past, at least since I've been here, we do it once a year about this time and we'll have to get, um, check into that and see when we can get that done. Yep.
Yep, that's fine. Good. Thank you. We'll get on it. Anybody else? Okay. Board of Adjustment entertaining motion for city council recessed. City's Board of Adjustment.
No move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Allen, second by Mr. McCartl. Yes. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, if I'd say aye?
Aye.
Close name. Motion carried. Action to set the date for Board of Adjustment hearing 9/7/21. John and Lisa Mantel have applied for front yard variance 21 feet versus 25 feet as required. Construction of a house addition at 1206 West Hanson Avenue legally described as Lot 9 of Western Heights Edition in the west half of section 21 Township 103 North Range 60 West of the 5th Prime Meridian. City of Mitchell-Davis County, South Dakota. Said property is owned R3 medium density.
Set the date.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Allen, second by Mr. Barrington. Further discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to address this? All those in favor of the motion, if I'd say aye?
Aye.
Close name. Motion carried. Action to set the date for Board of Adjustment hearing 9/7/21. Faith Missionary Church has applied for variance of the following. West side yard setback of zero feet versus three feet on Lot 3 and east 33 feet of Lot 44 and Block 3 of Gleason's Edition. East side yard setback of zero versus three feet on Lot 4, except east 33 feet of Lot 5 in Block 3 of Gleason's Edition. Rear yard setback of 20 feet versus 25 feet on both parcels. Offered addition of a 38-foot by night, 57-foot building crossing parcels lines located at 1025 E6 legally described as Lot 4, except the east 33 feet in Lot 5 and Block 3 of Gleason's Gleason's Edition northeast quarter section 22 Township 103 North Range 60 West of the 5th Prime Meridian. City of Mitchell-Davis County, South Dakota, in Lot 3 and east 33 feet of Lot 4, Block 3 Gleason's Edition in the same quarter. City of Mitchell-Davis County, South Dakota, said property is owned R4.
Set the date.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Charks, second by Mr. Rice. Further discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to address this? All those in favor of the motion, if I'd say aye?
Aye.
Close name. Motion carried. Action to set the date for Board of Adjustment hearing 9/7/21. Tomaine Shainfield has applied for condition of use permit to operate a family residential daycare center and home located at 1318 West Ash legally described as Lot 7 and Lots 7 and 8, Block 6 of Potter's Edition southeast, excuse me, southwest quarter section 21 Township 103 North Range 60 West of the 5th Prime Meridian. City of Mitchell-Davis County, South Dakota. Said property is owned R2, single family.
Motion to set the date.
Motion by Mr. McCartl.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rice. Further discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to address this? Close in favor of the motion, if I'd say aye?
Aye.
Close name. Motion carried. Recomine as city council, entertain a motion for Board of Adjustment to adjourn city council recomined regular session. Motion by Mr. Rice. Second by Mr. Barrington. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, if I'd say aye?
Aye.
Close name. Motion carried. Hearing and action on application transfer RB 3124 retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license from Extreme Golf, Inc. Doing business as Extreme Golf, Inc. Jeremy Jensen doing business as Jensen Capital Development LLC, 968 North Fulman. This license will be enacted.
Mayor and council chief Coster from Police Department. Um, we have no objection to this. Staff recommends approval.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Barrington.
Second.
Second by Mr. McCartl. Mr. Jensen, did you want to say anything?
No, it's just, just a transfer.
All right. Just making sure you were here. Give you a chance to be heard. Okay. Anybody else wish to comment on this? All those in favor of the motion, if I'd say aye?
Aye.
Close name. Motion carried. Action to approve special event application for Tour de Cornes on August 21st, 21. Road closure, parking lot closure, parade permit with escort and closures, waiver of all fees.
Mr. Mayor, council, um, this request is by Palace City Peddlers, uh, for their special event. Tour de Cornes on August 21st, 21, from 5:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Uh, requests for closure are from 5:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Uh, road closure is 7th from Main to Lawler. Uh, parking lot closure is the west half of the city hall parking lot. Um, there is a parade permit for, um, basically escorting the group at 9:30 out. Um, that's a $250 fee and they are requesting that that fee be waived. Um, staff does recommend approval.
Did we waive that last year, Joe?
We didn't have it last year. Before they didn't.
About two years ago, did, did we?
No.
You've.
We didn't request it.
You didn't, but you are now.
Why don't you tell us a little, can you go up and tell us a little bit about what kind of, uh, draw this brings into the community and what your attendance is and those kinds of.
Uh, right now, we're at a little over 300. My name is Tom Day. I'm with, uh, Palace City Peddlers and we're working on Tour de Cornes and that's this coming weekend. Uh, right now, we have a little over 300 applicants to, uh, ride in, uh, Tour de Cornes. And we expect probably 30 to 40 more on the morning of. We always have the last minute people that wait for the weather and try to decide if they're going to do it or not. So it brings about 350 people to the city, so, and it's a two-day event at the least. And sometimes three-day event for, a lot of people stay and we go do guided tours around Lake Mitchell on the trails on Lake Mitchell. So a lot of people also participate in that, so. And all the money we do raise goes back to maintaining the trails and building new trails around Lake Mitchell and hopefully around the new portion that she bought for Lake Mitchell. I hope to get some trails out there when that's finished, so.
I was just on a walk at, down on those trails and I am always just amazed and impressed with all the work that you guys do down there. So I'm going to move approval of this, um, and include the, um, waive of the fee.
Yeah. Motion by Mrs. Chark, second by Mr. Savers. Further discussion? Anybody else in the audience wish to address this? All those in favor of the motion, if I'd say aye?
Aye.
Close name. Motion carried. Action to approve agreement 8/20/2143 asbestos remediation at 2023 North Main Street. Mr. Schrader.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, council, uh, Brown Field asbestos and lead survey was completed at 223 North Main Street as requested by the city. Uh, the survey was completed at no cost to the city. Uh, the report shows that asbestos-containing materials were present in the, in the boiler jacket, pipe insulation, um, pack pipe fittings, uh, floor tile and mastic and sheet flooring and mastic. Uh, the report recommended that it be, uh, removed by a professional asbestos remediation contractor. Uh, we did receive requested quotes, uh, from different contractors and we received three back. Um, Horsley Specialties, Inc., uh, was the low quote being $36,293. Um, staff does recommend approval of this quote and this item is eligible for the Deadwood Grant to be, um, partially reimbursed.
And how's, and I thought I wrote in there, how soon could they get started if we approve?
Uh, the end of August, first part of September.
And it's a week, two week type thing?
They should be done in one week.
I move to approve.
Motion by Mr. McCartl.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rice. Further discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to address this? All those in favor of the motion, if I'd say aye?
Aye.
Close name. Motion carried. Action to approve agreement 8/20/2145 ARPA grant from the South Dakota State Library in the amount of $15,000. Mr. Kinkle, you want to speak to this?
Public library applied for a, uh, American Rescue Plan Act grant. I'm ca, I'm sorry, I'm Kevin Kinkle, library director.
They know you, but on TV they know.
Um, and, and so we were awarded a $15,000 grant, um, to purchase technology for the library. And so we recommend approval.
So what kind of technology are you going to purchase?
Well, um, since, since it's a smaller amount than we originally had hoped for, um, we're going to be upgrading some of our existing computers. But one, um, new service that we plan to, uh, implement is, is, um, online mobile printing. So that, and people will be able to print actually to the printers in the library from anywhere in town. Um, and then come to the library and pick it up later.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Allen.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rice. Further discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to address this? All those in favor of the motion, if I'd say aye?
Aye.
Close name. Motion carried. Resolution R202156, resolution declaring support for an adoption of the Davis County multi-jurisdictional pre-disaster mitigation plan. Mr. Schrader, you going to speak, good?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Mayor, council. Uh, the city of Mitchell participated in the Davidson County Hazard Mitigation Plan prepared by the Planning and Development District 3. Um, Marius Larson, uh, was one of our representatives, um, along, and Mark Genegas played a vital role, um, on the county side before he came over and joined the city. Um, the 2021 plan is an update, uh, to the previous plan, which is approved by FEMA in 2016. It's some, an item that's renewed every five years. Um, the report identifies for the city of Mitchell, uh, nine action items. Um, and those are projects to minimize effects of flooding, uh, constructing emergency storm shelters and installing additional warning sirens. Um, the resolution will adopt the plan and show the city's continued support for the plan and that the city will take action to ensure the plan is implemented successfully. Staff recommends city approval of the resolution.
Question, Joe. Um, and I know when we went through this the last time, we had quite a bit of discussion on the emergency storm shelter, um, concepts. Um, one located possibly at the soccer complex and then another, I don't know, someplace else in the, in the county or town.
Campground.
Campground. Um, any more discussion on that? Any it'll, other things for that, that need or the persistence of that?
So there's funding availability. So the plan would be to, um, work with District 3, um, and the state to come up with a funding plan and then we would, we would apply for the funding and then budget those numbers and we'd work on that probably within the next couple of years to implement them during this plan period.
Okay.
Are you looking for a FEMA grant?
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions? Comments?
I'll move approval of 202156, pre-disaster mitigation plan.
Motion by Mr. Rice.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Further discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to address this? All those in favor of the motion, if I'd say aye?
Aye.
Close name. Motion. Second reading of ordinance 020211, amending department head titles and departmental organization. Again, I want to stress that this does not. to help Mr. Gennery add the golf course. And I imagine a lot of you guys want to speak to this, so.
I think I'll start out first. Background on Lakeview Golf Course, I think we have a town our size, we have the nicest golf course and the last I checked, we were the lowest, cheapest golf course for a city our size. That's leaving Rapid City and Sioux Falls out. In the, somewhere in the mid to late 80s, they pulled away from the park board and very successful doing it that way. Some of the stuff they've done, you know, they bought all the land for the driving range. Being an enterprise fund, I think this is a huge, huge difference. They donated that to the city. All the, all the land where the driving range, when they put that in, if they wouldn't have done it, Lakeview would still have their little chipping range over there by, by 15, the elbow and 15 with money that they've raised out of the golf course. A working department head, I think, is a very good thing. It's worked very good here. In the eight years I was out there, the city threw in $0. They did throw in, one time when they had the lot, they sold the lots to the two houses out there, they repaved the, when I was out there, they repaved the, the parking lot with that, with the fundings of selling that. I know they've been throwing in, I think the average is 23,000. This year, the golf course is booming. It's, all golf courses are booming and, you know, it's, I don't know the exact figures right now, they're probably up 100,000, which is probably 25% income. That's just total off the top of my head. They have a board and, and, and a working department head, to me, to my mind, makes the most sense. It represents the golfers 100% of the, I better rephrase that. Everybody I've talked to in the golf board wants to keep it the way it was with it, with their own department head and the board voted unanimously officially once, maybe twice, depends on whether it was officially, to back, to leave it the way it was. The board represents the members and the members with an enterprise fund is the golf course. They're paying the bill, was, I think this is a huge difference here. They don't have a lot of full-time help, you know. You know, with when Kevin was out there, if you count him full-time, I think there was four. And in 2008, there was five. 2006 to 2008, I think Stephanie came up with. They, they do have 12, the full-time, 12 part-time help, so they are managing it. In the winter, I know they do weather tasks, you know, with, with the cemetery, he's also the department head of the cemetery. I think it'd be a major, major mistake by not keeping it the way, in my mind, keeping it the way it is. And, you know, I want, I want the board and the golf board to come up and speak and to answer some of the questions they have. I know Jeff's done, the board president has done a lot of work, checked out some finances. I'd like him to come up and make sure he gets his votes, his voice spoken and, you know, and I just hope we get enough votes to keep it where it is. I'm really worried down the road, we're gone, they're gone. You know, once, it took them a lot of, they, they used to be under the park board, this would just be under the park department head. It does put more work and load under Nathan, which has got a lot of departments under him already. I just think it'd be a major mistake to go away from what we've had that's been very, very successful. And I'd like to bring Jeff up to, to talk for the board and then any of the other people that want to talk.
What up?
That sounded voluntary. I'm Jeff McIntyre, I'm President of the Golf and Cemetery Advisory Board. And approximately a year ago, we entertained discussion on this when Kevin Thurman retired. We knew that filling that position was coming up and in the meantime, Nathan Powell was our interim department head. And we felt based on prior history and, and the current structure, the structure before worked well for us at the, at the golf course. Like, I was thinking the other day that in my former career, I was a conservation officer with Game Fish and Parks and as a law enforcement officer, I was managed by biologists. So our structure was kind of similar to what we're talking about here and it kind of hit me the other day that a lot of times when we made requests for equipment and resources and, and things of that nature, it had to go to a biologist that had no law enforcement experience. And so you had to make that justification to those people and it created challenges, to say the least. You don't need night vision goggles, you need a dip net or whatever the case may be, grass seed for a food plot. And so you had to make those, let alone addressing use of force issues or equipment for firearms and things like that. And that has since changed in that, in that agency. They now have a chief that answers to, similar to a mayor situation. And I also looked at the public safety director position. Doug Feltman was the first public safety director in Mitchell and came from a law enforcement background and he oversaw both the police and the fire divisions. Then Lyndon Overwig and then Glenn Sil was the, the latest one. I, I think if you ask the field level firemen and, or police officers, if there's any struggles with individuals managing you that don't have necessarily the expertise to do that, it creates challenges. And I think with the changes that are made now, you have a fire chief and a police chief that manage their respective divisions. And I look at this the same way. The golf course superintendent is, is not Carl Spackler from Caddyshack, okay? This, this is a very highly educated, highly trained, certified individual that maintains this course to a very professional level. They have to have knowledge of turf grass and diseases and certifications and spraying and they have a four-year degree in turf grass management, continuing education that goes along with it. So it's like a law enforcement position, it is a highly specialized, highly trained department or division. We'd have less of an argument, I think, if the cemetery wasn't geographically located right next door and the golf course stood by itself, but we don't. They're, fortunately, they're together. Is that my time up?
No. I don't know. Go ahead.
Does that, does that mean you buy donuts?
No, that means your time is coming up. Keep going.
Okay, okay. And so anyway, to summarize, it, it's not just a financial issue with, with the golfers and I have yet to talk to a golfer that supports this structural change to go back to what it was 20 years ago or 15 years ago, whatever it was. And so our, we voted unanimously to, to revert back to the, the prior structure and not just for the monetary reasons, but for the management and the structural issue. And we look at it not just as a current change, we look at it as a long-term issue. If we get a, a different park director or a different mayor, that's another step in our process that we have to make justifications for budget requests and equipment and, and things like that. And I think the person that oversees that should have an area of expertise in that specific realm. And there are some other board members here and I'm speaking on my behalf and as, as well as theirs and they're more than welcome to come up if they want. And I'd entertain any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Oh, Jeff, I have a question for you. You just touched briefly on the monetary differences.
You're good. Come up to, come up.
Yeah, or repeat.
So that they can't hear out.
Hi, I'm Jim Wilson. I just had a question for Jeff. Did you do a pencil and paper difference between the monetary issues?
Yes.
And?
I've, I've got some of them written down, but in, in the past, and it's, it's kind of skewed a little bit because I don't know, when Kevin Thurman was here, part of his salary was, actually came from the cemetery because his duties were, were there as well and assuming that would be the same with the proposed and.
Actually, the way I'm proposing, none of the salary for the department head will come out of any of your budgets.
And, and that's, I took that into account, but somebody had that.
Yeah, it's just all the staff, it's not separated by a division.
Right, and, and that's what I did, is I broke it down by golf course and cemetery to make it more of a reflective on what the, the golf course contributes and what the, the cemetery or the city does.
And I'll tell you that the past probably three, four years, we've had to put very little of the golf out of the golf because the fund was in the red, so it was the only way we could make a cash flow because it had been negative for four to five years. So actually, probably, I think we changed it in 2016. So the golf fund hasn't been paying for that director for a number of years.
And, and to, to address that issue, that is when golf kind of took a downturn nationwide it did, but especially here, Great Life had made a big push in, in Mitchell and a lot of people took advantage of that. And so we lost some individuals to, to that program. Since then, we've, we've seen a resurgence in that and, and so we're seeing it go, go the other direction. But if it is broken down by golf course and cemetery, according to my numbers, it would cost about $3,000 more a year, assuming that those positions are prorated based on the golf course and the cemetery. It would cost the golf course $3,000 more a year to have a director like we had before. It would cost about 20,000 more for the cemetery side, which comes from the city budget itself. So there is a, a difference.
Yeah, and the only problem with that is actually the golf wage is not coming out of the golf right now because it's not cash flowing. So the way we've accommodated that is probably, I don't know, 80% comes out of general fund of the total wage. It's not split. And a, a lot of times we have to turn off the transfer of health insurance as well.
Okay.
So either way, that's probably not going to change unless things change significantly in the golf course because the golf course, well, this year is good, but the previous years couldn't afford to take that salary out.
And, and those were the years.
And it's all the way back to 12, 2013, we were cash flowing, but we made some changes in these years to try to accommodate, but, I mean, it started going in the, 2015 was negative on through this year. This year is up.
Yep, it's a, it's a good year out there and we anticipate that continuing. And as I mentioned before, the golfers that I've talked to are, are willing to pay more, so to speak, to be able to have this structure for the long term and we think it'd be beneficial moving forward.
Quick question, Jeff. Does the golf board feel they have enough manpower out there or do they think they need more manpower?
Well, that's the other thing that's, that's tied to this is we're, we're short a full-time position and we've been asking for that full-time position to be filled, but apparently this needs to get ironed out first in order for that position to get filled. So Jason Gennery, the current superintendent, is, is running ragged right now. He's went through a long year basically without any full-time help and this summer's been, been tough. So we, we need that other staff as well and that, that's figured into those, that proposal as well.
Everybody in this country right now is looking for more help. I mean, it's just nationally because of COVID. I mean.
Come up to the microphone, Jim, if you want to speak.
You know, Jeff had a good point, you know, we were, we had memberships.
Say your name.
Jim Wilson, I'm sorry. Back in the day, we had high memberships. We took a dive on our memberships over, as Stephanie said, over a few years and now it's climbing back forward and that's just the way the golf industry goes from time to time. Bringing up the full-time and part-time help, you look at every business place just about and in town, there's help wanted signs for everybody. And it's just one of those types of things right now, it's hard to find help. And we need good help and we're looking for it, but we can only do so much with part-time help and, and we do have some nice programs with some retired individuals that's came up and give us a lot of help, you know, mowing and so on and so forth through the last four or five years. And that's a program through, what is it, Jeff? The program for the retired people to come help?
ARPA.
No. It's just, it's part-time, it's, it's people that want to work part-time and they get hired. Yeah, it's, it's funny, right. It's funny, but I'm just saying on, on the help wise, it's, it's not just a Mitchell, a Mitchell thing, it's, it's countrywide and I think every business place is feeling that pinch.
Yep.
But, okay.
Thank you. Anybody else who wants to talk? Nobody else?
I have counsel. The intent here is to get another golf course qualified person to work under Mr. Gennery and we did have a discussion about adding a seasonal part-timer that, that would have to come to council and go through the rig of, we don't have that position available at this time where we would have this one if this change is made, so.
Just so people know, if we get a working department head, to add another, to add another employee, what's got to happen? To get golf course more workers.
Well, if, if, if we're going to stay with this department head, and I've already talked in private with you guys, executive session, what I'm going to do, so it's not going to be a surprise to you. To do that, we would advertise for a department head if we're going to go that route and we would interview and see where that goes and it may not be Mr. Gennery, it may be Mr. Gennery, I don't know. I don't know how that would go, but you are aware that I'm not in favor of this and I likely will not take this avenue, so. And that is my choice as one, as an operations person, so you will be stuck with another part-time for a while, three years.
So if, if this gets voted to leave it like it is, we will be with one person?
You'll be with one and whatever part-time he can hire. I will not, I will not hire a department head for three full-time people. I've already said that. And I can't be any clearer than that.
And what's the reasoning for that?
I don't feel it's good use of city money. I can't justify a department head and hire for, to look over three people.
See, to me, when he's a working department head, that is an employee like Kevin, he brought a lot to the plate. So if you're a working department head, you got, you got your second employee and I was looking at Jeff's figures, you know, you know, if that is $3,000 more, that's not very much. And we're going in the direction that an enterprise fund that the golf board and the golfers want to go. And if we don't go that way and you keep it that way, then they're, we're sitting shorthanded.
My view on this is that if the mayor isn't going to hire, you know, if he's going to not give us a department head, you're going to lose less, you're going to have less workers out there. I'm in favor of getting one more worker and keeping, you know, keeping Jason doing what he's doing and having one more worker. It makes more sense to me to have one more worker than a department head, this could be going to a lot more meetings and not do, you know.
So in essence, you're, you're thinking adding another.
Another, I think another, another employee, because if they're running ragged now, I think they need more workers than a department head myself.
I think we should keep a department head.
Bob is the mayor, he's not going to give you a department head, so I think we need more people then.
I think we should keep a department head and hire.
He's not going to do that, though. We just said that. So it's not going to happen.
That's his choice.
So we need more.
But you're doing, you're doing a short-term thing for permanent. Then you're back under the parks director, but they, they, they went away from, and I'm pretty sure Kevin told me in the late 80s, so you're talking, you know, 30, 40 years ago, whatever it was, and it's been very successful. And just, it doesn't make no sense that we don't have a department head that's a worker that's working out there. So now you've got a department head that's.
I think we should keep a department head and hire. He's not going to do that, though, we just said that. So it's not going to happen. That's his choice. We need more. But you're doing a short-term thing for permanent. Then you're back under the parks director, but they went away from, and I'm pretty sure Kevin told me in the late 80s, so you're talking, you know, 30, 40 years ago, whatever it was, and it's been very successful. And it doesn't make no sense that we don't have a department head that's a worker that's working out there. So now you've got a department head that's earning a salary, that's working as a certified superintendent, and you have you as an assistant. I just think we have a nice golf course right now, and to keep it nice, we're going to need, we're going to need another worker out there instead of. Alls I know is I golf every Tuesday night in league, and I don't think I've seen our golf course in better shape on Tuesday nights in a long time, and we're going through a drought, and I just golfed last Tuesday.
I'm curious, what would be, how would things improve if we had a department head? Over, I mean, because I got a call today, and they said the golf course has never been in better shape than it is right now, so my question is, tell me what is the added value of having that department head? And that's for any of you guys, if you can.
You're going to get the second employee as somebody qualified to take care of a golf course, and the council here is saying that they would even entertain adding a third one for you. It would be more seasonal, part-time, where they would be able to get South Dakota retirement, but it wouldn't be year-round, if that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, and if Jason works seven days a week, he gets a couple more helpers, I mean, he'll get, take a day off. He told me he takes a day off every week because of the cemetery, head of the cemetery covers. He said he's out there every weekend, every day. What's that? I've heard he's out there every day of the week. He told me personally, head of the cemetery takes one of the days a week. He said he's, you know, running ragged. Name me somebody in the golf course that don't, that's your profession. You worked, 27 years I was in it, I mean, you worked 60 to 80 hours a week, and in the winters, you're downtime. It's a, in my opinion, it's a major, major mistake, and it'll set Lakeview Golf Course
I think everybody, I hope people are aware that all of the department heads serve at the pleasure of the mayor, and so really, that is the mayor's option to appoint or to not appoint a department head, and that really isn't something that we as a council can override, that's his thing. So in my mind, if he's saying there won't be another department head, I think our next best opportunity is to take what's on the plate, which is to bring in another worker that is qualified, and hopefully, another seasonal worker, because we're not going to get a department head.
Go ahead, Mr. Johnson. Brian Johnson, Golf Course Cemetery Board. I think the thing that's got most of us confused is going back to when Kevin was still employed, he had an assistant, which at that point was Jason. Kevin retires, we no longer have one person, full-time person is gone. Jason has had to work the whole season with one full-time person short. Now, you're talking about changing the department head to the Park and Rec side, but then hiring an assistant. Well, now we've actually added one additional person to the Golf Course Cemetery, because now we're going to have Jason, who will be full-time, and the assistant, who we've not been allowed to hire to this point, and Nathan. So to me, it's like, where's the savings there? I mean, you've got.
Pull up the numbers, would you say?
Well, I mean.
There's definitely a savings, because we pay 90-some thousand dollars for a department head. So regardless, if we have a department head, $85,000 a year, that's not a good use of city funds to manage three people. So if we get rid of that, we've got $85,000 to go out and find a new, somebody else to work at the golf course as a full-time employee.
Stephanie, what's the low end on, if we hire a young superintendent, what's the low end? I see Kevin quit at $92,104,000.
First of all, we don't hire anyone based on the age, so if you were to hire someone with less experience, they would qualify at the entry level, which is 85,000, but the mayor is authorized and has started people up to the midpoint of the range, depending on their experience and their education. So that could be anywhere from 85 to halfway to 128. I don't have the midpoint in front of me to know what that.
I didn't do any background, but back checks, maybe I should have, but for a head superintendent at a course this size, 92 would be in the top, top, top of the level. That's very good, especially with city benefits. There's very few, very few, if any, making more than that in the state of South Dakota. Stephanie, are those $85,000 to 128 max, is that with benefits or not?
That's just the base wage, based on the salary schedule at the city. So in addition to that, you would have 6% match on South Dakota retirement, you would have 100% of an employee's coverage of health insurance and dental, you'd have your, however many holidays we have, a lot.
What you see there is strictly wage, what he would make.
So you look another 20 grand.
Oh, our benefits usually, when we're estimating what that cost is to the city, is 25,000 on top of the base wage.
And when that base wage plus this, plus all the benefits, does that come out of the golf course fund, or how does that?
Well, it should be, because it's an enterprise fund, but again, we haven't been able to do that since at least 2012. It has not supported, not even 50% of that cost, because the golf course fund has been in the red. So we have shifted more of that expense over to the cemetery, because that's general fund money, and really, it's not any different whether we're putting it out of the cemetery or I'm having to do a contingency transfer of the cash from general fund into golf course. You can't let an enterprise fund go in the red. So the way we've accommodated that, because if you look at the budget when you guys pass it, it looks like it's going to balance, but it's never hit the revenue goals of what were outlined in the budget. So it's always fell short and needed additional cash, even after sometimes removing some of the wages into the general fund, we've still had to subsidize cash if the fund got negative.
This year, they do have a good, they are making good money, which they do have new golf carts coming, so.
Thank you.
Sorry, that was not a very quick answer.
It's quick enough.
And what we'd be looking for in a golf specialist is somebody with golf course experience and education, working their way up to what Mr. Ganeri is, a golf Class A superintendent. And if the council looks at doing a part-time seasonal, or however you say that.
It's a, I think that we call those a South Dakota Retirement Eligible Regular Part-Time Employee, or something like that.
Okay, whatever. So they'd be so many months and hours out of the year, but they would be on South Dakota retirement. That would eat up any savings, obviously would eat up any savings we would have overall, but it would give you another person qualified to take care of a golf course. And that would have to come back to council, because we're not authorized for that position.
Basically, what you're doing is you're taking the management expense that the city is really already covering now anyways out of the cemetery fund, because the golf hasn't had it, and you're putting it with Park and Rec, and now you're using all of the wages that you're putting into golf for actual golf.
This is not under the Park and Rec Board. For that to happen, it would have to come back, and council would have to approve that as a separate item to go under the Park and Rec. It is not being placed under Park and Rec. It will remain under the Golf Cemetery Board.
Not necessarily, not necessarily know where this vote was going to go. My concerns I have, and from what I'm hearing, Mr. Mayor, that obviously, the appointment of a department head will not happen under the next three years. One thing I guess if the vote goes through to approve your recommendation, and I love when we put it together here, and we have a possible savings here somewhere about 42 to 64 in states, but knowing that out there, they need obviously staff, and I know we're going to hire another one that has a specialization of turf, or however you want to call it, golf specialists, I, for myself, I'm encouraged that the council would take a look at if this would go through, that yes, the savings is there, but let's take the savings and invest it into another additional employee for the golf board out there. I think we all know there's never enough out there to make sure that we keep the premier golf course in our city, let alone the state, and we all know we have a great one out there. And I, as I do like savings for the city, and I know it wouldn't break us by any means, we just used up the funds that we'd be saving back to zero, I would like them to have another employee out there, so actually, we'd be adding one over the top compared to a department head, so we'd be gaining two instead of just one by the appointment of a department head. So I just encourage that for us, it'd be a different time, I know it'd be a different night, but if it goes through, I would like us to take a good hard look at adding that other third person, too.
If council's willing to approve that position later on, I am all for it.
I think that's a good idea.
Stephanie, can you bring that, those numbers back up again, that's the 42,000 on the low side?
Ah, hold on. Too many tabs open.
I'm just going to, so everybody can see if the.
And again.
Expand a little bit of what Marty just said, because if, the way it was before when Kevin was here, you can see there was four individuals that were working. Now, we can't pick and choose what salaries we want to just arbitrarily pay people, because we have a pay grade, and we have to follow it, we're union, and there's, there is determined with every single job what the duties are, where it slots, and what would be the minimum, what would be the maximum. So unfortunately, we just can't pick a number out of the air, because then we would not be bargaining in good faith. So we've got four individuals when Kevin was with us, as you can see, and the salaries then came up to the 239. And then what Bob is proposing is the fact that we're going to utilize a different department head, it just happens to be the Park and Rec department head, but we will have, under that particular method, we will have four individuals also, and then we would have the savings of approximately $40,000. And what I would like to see is, just as Marty has said, if we're saving $40,000, I would like to have the golf board determine, would you rather have more employees in salary out there, or would you rather utilize that money to do some improvements on the course? And let them come with a recommendation, and of course, all boards are in place to give us recommendations, there's nothing that, you know, obviously, we have to follow to a T, but as we all know, when it comes as a recommendation, we have a tendency to make sure we follow it. So that would be my suggestion, and then keep in mind is, Bob's got total control over who he brings for personnel for us to ratify, but the council has total control of the Unless there's a tie or something that comes through, but, so.
When you're at my mercy with a tie.
Yep, yep, there you go. So that's another thing to keep in mind as we're looking at this, and the mayor basically has said, this is a three-year plan, because any council and any mayor can revert back if they so choose. Now, that's, again, it would have to be the mayor bringing it to the council, and then the council ratifying it. So, you know, we need to keep all that in mind as we're working through this, but given the fact that the board is still going to be active and in place, and not under the Park and Rec Board itself, they're going to utilize a department head to bring their recommendations to the council, and then the council can decide if they agree or disagree, or what they want to utilize with these funds, so.
And they have been doing that for the last roughly year. Mr. Powell has been going as the acting department head and reporting back and bringing things to us, so. And we've already heard, the golf course is in excellent shape. If we can add one more golf-qualified person, it should help the golf course. If we add two, it should really help the golf.
Jeff, you're debating the, can you come up, and I know I got an email of it, and talk about the finances that you did through, because I was looking at them, they don't, they don't, they clash with the figures I'm seeing on the board here.
Me with finances.
Well, we're going to, you're going to argue with CPA and.
I know, this is.
But good luck.
Thanks on the spot.
Thanks, Dan. The first thing I noticed with the pay structures that were up there, they were utilizing, they didn't utilize the current salaries, because Jason and Aaron were currently employed, so those need to be adjusted up.
Who's Aaron?
Aaron Willis, the.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Cemetery sexton.
Okay.
Yeah, and it gets confusing with both budgets, I guess, as far as the cemetery and the golf course.
I can answer that if you'd like, Mayor, I know I sent that out to council. Whenever we're doing reorganization, we always use the minimum and the maximum of the ranges, just because that's the only way to make an accurate apples-to-apples comparison. If you were to go and fill the golf and cemetery director, you might fill it midway through the range instead of at the minimum, so if you really want to look at placement, kind of throws it off. The mayor did have me go back and, I'm trying to see if I can see here, and do the comparison with the placements, and it actually didn't change anything, because you have to assume that you'd be hiring a new golf cemetery director at the minimum. So I can pull that up for you, too, but anytime we've been doing reorganizations or we make comparisons on wages, we always use the wage range itself, because placement can be anywhere within, someone could not move to the next step based on performance, or you may end up hiring someone who had three, two years' experience, who's hired at step two, and the previous person was at step one.
Right.
The staff throws that out.
I understand that, and, you know, if you get a more qualified person, they could be moved up within that range, so dealing with the minimums, I'm assuming Mr. Ganeri and Mr. Willis will not be reduced in salary, so Jason, I think, is at around 61, and Aaron's around 50.
61, 69, D8.
Perfect.
To be exact.
To be, to be exact. And what I did is, I broke them down based on.
I just didn't want to bring employees' wages up on the screen during the public meeting, but you can see with actual placements, it's still the same.
And what I did was, I broke down golf versus cemetery, because we are dealing with an enterprise fund, and assuming, and that's up to you to decide, I guess, as far as what percentage of the superintendent/department director's salary comes from the city/cemetery side and versus, and I'm assuming moving forward that Mr. Powell will be reimbursed for the extra duties on top of what he's taking on, and that's one of the concerns moving forward, is, I know Mayor has said that that's not.
Mr. Powell, I hate to break the streak, but you're not getting a raise. He will work where he is right now, we've had that discussion.
Okay, I read in the paper after the last meeting that he was going to receive a, but anyway, I guess my point is, is that that would be open, and this is more of a long-term vision, this isn't just right now, that those would be subject to, if you have a department, and I'm getting these confused, a division or department director who is contributing towards an entity with the city, rightfully so, some of that should go towards paying their salary, and that's your guys' decision to make that, but we're looking at that as part of the decision process and making this, so again, looking past the three years and into the future.
Well, currently, we're absorbing all of your department heads. If you really want to pay for the department head, we'll go back to that method, but we're trying to help you guys out here, too.
Right, and while we would under our, or what we wanted to do, but not under the current one, we can't afford that, or under the proposals, so. I don't know if that answers your question, but I'm going back.
It was his question.
I guess the only thing I need to make sure that's clear, Golf Course is not paying for 100% of the golf director's wages, did not pay for it in 2020, and didn't even pay 50% for the last three years prior to that, just because that fund has not been cash-flowing. Last year and this year, we stopped transferring any insurance costs that the city would normally pay towards health insurance from that fund into the health insurance fund, because it wasn't cash-flowing. So when you see those losses, that's not even factoring in the fact that you didn't pay the benefits for that employee or any wages. So when I showed you your negative balances, it's going to be higher if you start asking for even, if you start putting that department head and the other wages back in there, it's not going to cash flow, there's no way you can do that, we'll have to keep some of that in golf course or general fund, or else you're going to have to have, we're really not supposed to show a general fund transfer into enterprise funds. funds, or else they don't meet the enterprise category. Enterprise funds are supposed to bring in enough revenue to cover all their expenses, and this fund is not doing that. So there's no way we're going to be able to show those expenses all in the golf fund without making some significant changes. This year's great. It's cash flowing, but you also, we're going to have $100,000 general fund loan for the golf courts. So I'm just cautioning everybody because I don't want anyone walking away from this thinking that, that the golf course is 100% self-supporting right now. It's not, and it hasn't been for several years, even after we've moved the wages and benefits of the department head and the benefits of all employees out for the last three months of last year. And I can't remember when we turned it off this year. Ju, July, a month or two ago? They wouldn't be cash flowing that much if we hadn't turned it over, but my concern was they're going to end up being short again, and we don't have the contingency or the revenue to transfer over to them. So I guess I'm just saying that because you need to be cautioned that when you're looking at the financials, they're not covering 100% of the cost, not even close, to golf-only Just from your finance, finance review person, I guess. Take it for what it's worth.
So if council does approve this recommendation from the mayor, there's four individuals that are, that are showing up on the screen. Is it my understanding that three of them are filled right now? And then they would be advertising? How quickly, Mayor, if this is approved, how quickly would you advertise this?
Mrs. Kitchens? How quickly could we get it out and advertise? Ready to go?
As soon as we get the job description from Nathan, which he's already been working on, we can get it online as soon as tomorrow, so, and out in the newspapers by the weekend.
Hiring an assistant this type of year is like finding a teacher in the middle of February.
Yeah, and we're at the end of, obviously, I, I think we're probably all looking more toward next year, making sure that we have, we have sufficient individuals on, on the course. And then there's the possibility of even opening it up for one more. But again, I would like to have the input of the, the golf board. But one other thing I would, I was going to mention, too, is right now it's designed as such that there, none of the golf would have to pay for the director. And that's what's being proposed right now. And we all know that that could change in the future, too. So that, that's, again, it would be the mayor and, and the ratification of, of the budget for, for the council. But, and, and things get lost and things get forgotten, and we're going to, we're going to exchange out here at some point in time. And, and what I would like to have in place, that it is recommended from this council, if you guys want to go along with it or not, but this, if this gets approved tonight, I would have a high recommendation that future mayors and councils do not take any existing funds out to cover the director as it sits right now. And I know that doesn't, that you, you can't obviously lock down any, but at least you can have it in the file or wherever that anybody could go back and look, that this is what this particular council in 2021 wanted for various reasons. And if the mayor would support it, that would be his choice. But that's what I would like to see if, again, if we have, if we do approve this.
If we got the files on that? Well, I, I like it being, I like it...
Yeah, I like it being noted. I mean, we all know we can't tie the hands or bind a future council, but having it be noted in the minutes, I think that's a big plus. I think we, we know for the years that we have been sitting here for sure, Mr. Smith, over the last 15. There's been times that the only recollection that we can go back to is nowhere in the books. It's in the fact of the people that might be sitting here yet. And now we know of late, things have been getting more documented, no doubt about it, but there's a lot of things back in the past. I don't remember that. It's nowhere documented. We, we've had it with a question of what employees worked how many years ago under Thurmond. So it's, it's great to have some document, and I'm all in favor of that, have it be noted, so.
And there was three years where there was a person, Mr. Saber, informed us last, two weeks ago. But it only lasted three years, and it went away again for whatever reason council chose to make that position go away.
Could we clarify just one time for the minutes to make sure we have this correct? Which, can you just clarify a little bit what we don't want to take the savings from? You mean the savings, we don't want to, if you go forward with this proposal, you don't want golf fund to ever have to try to make up the difference of the park and, or the department head's salary, right? Okay. So it would only be funding the positions that were listed on the board? In other words? Okay. Just making sure I understood. Thank you.
So, Mr. McEntee, the way they've said, I don't know how they're going to go with this, but if it does go my way, you guys will have to have some input, or you will need put, give us some input as to what you want to do with the $40,000 that is saved, whether you want another position, or if you want to start putting that towards projects. I mean, that, they're going to want golf board input, input on that. And keep in mind Stephanie's about 90% done with her budget, I bet. But we don't...
Just close out Friday.
But we don't, but it's the end of September, though, is when we, we are going to be, yeah. And then it needs to be approved in, in October, Stephanie? So we do have some time. But you, I know you're working on it, obviously.
Yep. But council, obviously, will be having your hearings, and you can make changes to the budget like you always do during hearings anyway, so you could consider those then.
Just so you know, it's coming.
Okay. Second reading.
Okay. I don't know if anybody's had any more comments, but with the proposal that's given to us from the mayor, I think this is probably a, a good resolution to, to proceed and, you know, with the ordinance. And, and then we can get more bodies out the golf course. And, and also keep in mind, you know, they'll, they'll funnel their, their suggestions and so forth through, through Nathan to get to us. And if they're not totally satisfied with how things are going, they can always come directly to the, to the council and, and relay what, what you think is working and, and what is not. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to, to approve on second reading the ordinance.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Smith?
And I'm going to second it, just the fact that I know we won't get any other employees if we hold still, so enable to move the golf course forward by having more staff out there and additional things. I will second your motion, Jeff.
Okay. Second by Mr. Barrington. Further discussion? Anything else anybody out there wants to say? Okay. All is favor, the motion is certified by saying aye.
Aye.
Foes, nay?
Nay.
Motion carried.
Move it up.
Motion by, motion by Mr. Rice, second by Mr. McCartell. Further discussion? Anybody wish to address the adoption? Roll call, please.
Charks? Aye. Smith?
Aye.
Sabers?
Nay.
Rice?
Aye.
McCartell?
Aye.
Barrington?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Motion carried. Action to approve agreement A 2021-44, real estate transfer agreement for 20, or 223 North Main. Mr. Johns?
All right. So once again, back to the Crafty Fox building. I know it's been a couple of minutes now. So if you recall, back when the city initially took over the building, there were preliminary discussions with the Development Corporation for them to take over the property at that time, and the city was going to also transfer enough funds to cover the nuisance abatement that was necessary at that time. So obviously, a lawsuit happened. Time has dragged on, but now we're, we've got the lawsuit resolved and we're ready to move forward once again. Development Corporation has been working through some of their processes in the background. The city's been proceeding on some of the nuisance abatement ourselves in the meantime. The transfer agreement that's in front of you tonight would, once again, transfer the property to the Development Corporation. They have a development opportunity that they've been pursuing. The remainder of the funds that we have not yet spent on nuisance remediation, we would also transfer to Development Corporation, which at this point is just a small amount, around $9,000. And then there are a number of contingencies that are built in in case the development agreement does not end up coming through the way the Development Corporation believes that it will, so. I think that covers the basics. If there's any questions or anybody else that wants to comment on it, I will open it up to that.
So Justin, if this doesn't go through, it comes back to the city of Mitchell? This agreement?
Well...
This transfer?
You're saying if the development...
Say if it doesn't work, just like the last one we had over here across the street.
So...
Similar, similar to that.
With, with this, the way it's structured right now, the Development Corporation would either have the oper, uh, opportunity to pull out of the transfer, or, and if, if they did that, then this, the property would stay with the city. If the development proceeds, then it, it wouldn't come back to the city presumably.
Thank you.
So Danny, your question was whether it would come back to the city or not?
If, if, if something happened.
Yeah. Okay.
Thanks for...
Go ahead, Mrs. Beck.
Good evening. Jerry Beck with the Development Corporation. Well, if it takes a, a village to raise a child, I think it's taking Mitchell's dream team to get through this whole process. But this is just the next step in the process of getting the building renovation. We did the RFP and accepted a proposal, and now it's the time when we, when the transfer would come to the Development Corporation for the renovations of the building. And when the renovations are done, then the ownership would go to the private individual. So happy to answer any questions if you have them, but due to a lot of the people around this table and in this room, we are, we are where we are today, so.
And Justin, I think you said, I just want to clarify, the $9,700 whatever dollars to be transferred is what's left that the city hasn't spent in the nuisance abatement?
Uh, so, yeah. If you take, you go back to the original plan before the lawsuits and everything, the intention was going to be to transfer $150,000 to help cover all of those nuisance abatement costs.
And that's the windows and other stuff that we've been doing?
Correct. The, the windows and the, the tuck pointing were the two primary, you know, costs that we were considering at that time. So out of that original 150, we've spent approximately that 141, you know, depending on how you want to look at the numbers. But it's approximately that $9,000 that would be left out of that original intended amount.
And is any of that going to be used for asbestos and other stuff, or is that...
Yeah, so it's a condition in there that...
It'll roll through depending on the grants and other stuff?
So, well, so the, the additional funds that we, the $9,000 that we're talking about in the agreement, those are limited to be used towards additional nuisance abatement because there will still be windows and some other matters that need to get taken care of.
Since we shifted our focus from finishing some of those windows to the abatement of the lead and asbestos, so they'll still have some of those windows left.
We did get a $20,000 grant that has helped pay for some of this, the lead, and we're hoping to get another $20,000 grant to help pay for asbestos as well, so.
So at this point, if you recall, the lead should be completed. They've done the work. They still need to do the, the, the testing to make sure that that was successful and everything, but that should be coming shortly. And then you approved tonight the asbestos remediation. If you look at those costs, that was, for, for the asbestos, plus the lead, was another 27, so that was, I think, around 63. I'm trying to remember my numbers, but, and then off of that, you have the 20,000 that will be reimbursed through the Deadwood Grant, so.
So Jerry, at the planning commission here a week ago, we didn't have sufficient numbers for a quorum, and we had a, a couple that obviously had to abstain because they're involved in the process. So did that set anything back at this point? Do you, have you had any communications with them? So, but I'm assuming, though, that they would like to, to make sure that we can get started sooner than later on this. And I don't know, Mayor, if we can poll to see if, who, who's going to be able to come to the next meeting or not, but, yeah, that's always, it's always tricky knowing people's schedules, but...
They can always call in. Yeah. No, I didn't, I mean, I don't think it's a problem. The only...
It has to be transferred, so we're, we want to be completely off the title of this thing as they get going, for obvious reasons. If they drill a hole and the building falls in, we don't want people thinking, hey, this owns, the city owns it.
Yeah, this might be a better logical step.
Yes. We really needed this. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Johns, but we needed this to happen before they could really do anything, anyway.
So this is going to give the Development Corporation the interest in the building. So they, they can close at a later date, and I don't think they intend to close until they are ready to start work. But this will give them that ability. It will give them any interest, and then they can close when they're ready to close, and then the project could proceed without any additional delay. Now, the way things sit right now, there, there are historical processes that they need to go through as well, and they're, they're pursuing those, but it's, it's still early in those stages, too. We did recently provide a letter from the mayor saying that we did not object to any of their applications that they're currently going on for placing the property on the National Register and seeking certification through that. So we're doing everything that we can to try to streamline the process and make sure that nothing is holding up any of the development.
The proposed developers going after some historic credits that are available on the building to renovate, that, that's part of why we've done that.
And I'm, I know this is unrelated from what we're going to be voting on tonight, but I'm just assuming that they would like to get planning commissions, a quorum there and...
Yeah.
Just for, I mean, for that step to, to be resolved and, and moved on. So hopefully, a week from today, we're, we're going to be able to have a quorum, but I know schedules change, too, so it's understandable.
And I'm sure the council is aware, but the members that were there were generally in favor of the plan that was proposed, that they did not have enough members to make that official.
Okay.
And I guess I should also add that we probably could not have approved the plan at that point, anyway, because the people seeking that approval did not yet have any interest in the building, so.
There's a lot of moving parts to this.
Right. So really, we needed this to take place before that was officially approved, anyway, so.
Okay.
It's a process.
Thanks, Jerry.
It's really exciting. I think this will be a very nice building once it's renovated, and it will be a benefit to downtown. And I hope it kicks off a whole lot of benefit to downtown, so.
On that note, I'd like to move approval of agreement A 2021-44.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Chark, second by Mr. Allen. Further discussion? Does anybody, anyone who wants to address this? Don't want to get back up, Mrs. Beck? All those in favor of the motion is certified by saying aye.
Aye.
Foes, nay? Motion carried. Word adjourned.